All right, we are going to start the City of Iowa City's formal meeting for May 16, 2023. It is 6:00 PM. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Alter.
Here.
Burgess.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Harmsen.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Teague.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
All right, well, welcome to all the councilors once again and to everyone that is here present and those that are virtually tuning in right now. The first, the second item are proclamations. And 2A is National Gun Violence Awareness Day, and this will be read by Councillor Burgess, who is in orange today.
Whereas every day, more than 120 Americans are killed by gun violence and more than 200 are shot and wounded, with an average of more than 17,000 gun homicides every year, making Americans 26 times more likely to die by gun homicide than people in other high-income countries. And whereas Iowa has 323 gun deaths every year, with a rate of 10 deaths per 100,000 people, a crisis that costs our state 40, sorry, $4.2 billion each year, of which $53 million is paid by taxpayers. Iowa has the 41st highest rate of gun deaths in the U.S. And whereas, support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand-in-hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories. And whereas mayors and law enforcement officers, in partnership with local violence intervention activists and resources, know their communities best, are most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it, and are best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe. And whereas, gun violence prevention is more important than ever, as we see an increase in firearm homicides and non-fatal shootings across the country, increased calls to domestic violence hotlines, and an increase in city gun violence. And whereas, on January, in January 2013, Hadiya Pendleton was tragically shot and killed at age 15. And on June 2, 2023, to recognize her 26th birthday, people across the United States will recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day and wear orange in tribute to her and other victims of gun violence. An idea inspired by a group of her friends who asked classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange, choosing this color because hunters in the field or the woods wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters, and orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas, by wearing orange on June 2, 2023, Americans will raise awareness about senseless gun violence, honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors, and commit to work with evidence-based solutions to reduce gun violence, pledging to do all we can to keep our families and communities safe. Now therefore, on behalf of Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, I do hereby proclaim the first Friday in June, June 2, 2023, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day, and I encourage all citizens to support their local communities' efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and honor the value of human lives. Accepting this proclamation will be Monica Maloney-Mitros and other Moms Demand Action. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary Teague, for making the proclamation, and Councillor Burgess for reading that. And I am addressing the City Council members, all those here present this evening, Mayor Teague, and all of those who may be on Zoom or will see this meeting in the future. I am here representing Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America, and I'd like to take a short time. We've already heard the statistics, the heartbreaking statistics. I'm not going to repeat that, but I want to ask you to honor Hadiya, hearing her story tonight. And what I want you to know is that we can take action to reduce gun violence, beginning right here in our community. On Wear Orange Day, step out wearing orange. Take a friend with you. That will grow the movement. Wear orange to show that you value each person's life. Wear orange to show you want to honor those killed, those wounded, and everyone impacted by gun violence. Wear orange to call for an end to gun violence, advocating for a future free from gun violence. And then, after wearing orange, or as you wear orange, continue that weekend and into the week, and take action. Positive action. Join with community partners such as DVIP and NAMI as they advocate for support to those who are experienced gun or domestic violence, or who need additional funds and care for health mental issues. Participate in the Be Smart program, a program to educate gun owners to lock their guns, to keep their ammunition separate from guns, so that our children and young people who may be discouraged in the moment cannot instantly get a gun and cause gun violence and such agony for all involved. Write, call, text, repeat. Write, call, text your legislatures to tell them to support common sense gun laws, and to ask them to vote no on those that are not, that will not promote safety. Support your neighborhood events, strengthening our community. Use your social media to text and promote gun safety measures. Check in on our Moms Demand Action Iowa-Johnson County Facebook page to learn more about how to reduce gun violence and get involved. Thank you all for listening. I hope to see you out wearing your orange, promoting gun safety in our community, and taking action to move forward so that we truly do come to a time when we are free from gun violence in America. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 2B is National Public Works Week. Whereas, public works professionals of Iowa City Public Works Department focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital, important to a sustainable and resilient community, and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the City of Iowa City. And whereas, these infrastructure facilities and services cannot be provided without the dedicated efforts of our public works professionals, who are responsible for maintaining and proving and protecting our transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our community members. And whereas, it is in the public interest for the community members and civic leaders to gain knowledge of and maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in Iowa City. And whereas, the year 2023 marks the 63rd Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. And whereas, the 2023 National Public Works Week theme, Connecting the World Through Public Works, highlights the way public work professionals connect us physically, through infrastructure and inspirationally, through service to our community, whether as first responders or daily workers, carrying out their duties with pride. Now therefore, I, Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim the week of May 21 through May 27, 2023, to be National Public Works Week in Iowa City, and urge all community members and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works, and to recognize the substantial contributions which public work professionals make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. And receiving this proclamation is Ron Kanoki, our Public Works Director, accepting. Oh, there he is.
Mayor Teague and Council, good evening. On behalf of the 160 public works professionals in the Iowa City Public Works Department, I'd like to thank you for this National Public Works Week proclamation and your support of the Public Works Department. The dedicated professionals who work in our engineering, equipment, resource management, streets, wastewater, and water divisions exemplify this year's theme, Connecting the World Through Public Works. Whether providing the everyday services made more challenging by material shortages, responding to extreme weather events, or water main breaks, the Public Works Department is ready and here to serve our community. This year, we will celebrate the 20th anniversary of the Iowa City Water Treatment Plant, and will showcase this facility with an open house this Saturday, May 20. We invite all community members to stop by between 1:00 and 3:00 PM for a tour of the water plant at 80 Stephen Atkins Drive. The city will have vehicles from its fleet on display with a Touch a Truck event, the Iowa City Public Library Bookmobile, and games from the parks and recreation to help celebrate. The Public Works Open House event will be the kickoff to National Public Works Week in Iowa City. We look forward to hosting you at the water plant and helping us celebrate the 20th anniversary. Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to our consent agenda items, 3 through 8. Could I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Taylor.
Second, Burgess.
All right, anyone from the public like to discuss any item that is on our consent agenda? If you're online, please raise your hand. In person, come forth. Seeing no one, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Motion passed, a seven to zero. We're on to item number nine, which is community comments. This is an opportunity for anyone to come forth on any, to talk about anything that is not a topic listed on our agenda. If you're online, please raise your hand. If in person, please come forth. Also, three minutes will be allotted for each individual. We, our clock is not working, but we will have our Mayor Pro Tim keeping the time. And once you're here, that go off, your time will be up, and I will say, thank you, thank you. All right, please come forth. We ask that you state your name and the city you're from.
Hi.
Welcome.
My name is Sherman White, and I'm here from the last meeting that I was here. I think everybody has a copy of this. I was here on the May 2. I was before this honorable committee to report and examine several improprieties at the Shelter House. On January 10, 2023, this council awarded Shelter House 1.1 million, and Chrissy Candinelli, Executive Director, $100,000 bonus. What were the merits of such a bonus? But Nicole Chaplin still contends there's no funds available for Sherman. Both facilities, 501 and Shelter House, put out more police calls than Town and Campus and Broadway, from anything from racist attacks, drugs, guns, knives, children being housed with abusive parents and pedophiles, male and female prostitution. Mayor Teague and the Chief of Police can verify this. I was down there this morning, and there was like five police calls this morning when I was down there, from 10 to 12 o'clock this morning, I was down there. And I had a friend that OD'd down there recently, at 501 Building. And even tonight, if I was to go down there to Nightmare, I could smuggle anything into either one of those buildings, gun, knife, drugs, whatever. There's no, there's no checkpoint. There's, there's no check and balance there at all. No one, no one scrutinizes anything. I mean, and, and what is the Shelter's house budget? I mean, because everything is donated. Clothes is donated, shoes is donated, transportation is donated, food, cough drops, personal hygiene items, socks, chin oil, even aspirins are donated. And since I was here the last time, I have attempted to, to make contact with the staff at, even today, I invited Mrs. Candinelli to come down here with me. And I, I can't get a hold of anybody. They keep their mail, voicemails full, so I can't get through. This, my caseworker, John Posey, rode by me twice and would not even stop. And he's out there where I was living at, at Town and Campus, and he would not stop and acknowledge me or speak to me about anything that I have been calling him about. And I document all my calls, all my emails, and everything that I send to these people.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes. We're going to go online to Tristin. Welcome.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome. You have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to continue to follow up on the discussions on council, on the budget for this fiscal year, this upcoming fiscal year, and comments that have been made by the public about the police budget. And I just wanted to again remind council that they have stated in the past that they needed more information from stakeholders, and potentially make a decision to, in the future going forward, allocate less funding to police. So I again, just wanted to, to follow up and keep you aware that you had made that commitment, and ask what you've done since the vote to approve the budget with the increase in police funding. You know, who have you reached out to in the community? What have you done to educate yourselves? And what information you feel will be enough to, to make a decision on that? So I, I just would love to, to hear from City Council, I think as, as public servants, that would be nice to know that you have actually taken the many, many, many public comments and emails and letters into consideration, and whether you are any more educated or any closer to making a decision on that. So I'll yield the rest of my time, but that's what I had to say today.
Thank you. Anyone else? Welcome. Please state your name and city you're from. And there is also a sign-in sheet there as well.
All right. I also sent some slides. I don't know if you guys have them. All right. Hello, my name is David, David Ramotowski, and I live in the east side of Iowa City, 52245. And I'm originally from Alexandria, Virginia. And so, this is a picture of my Honda Super Cub. It's my primary form of transportation. And I've been riding for the last four years to get to and from work. I'm currently a PhD student here, and I was a master's student at North Carolina State University in Raleigh, and so that's when I started riding. And so I like to say that I don't work to ride, I ride to work. And so this is usually where I like to park my bike, right next to the Seaman Center, because I work in civil and environmental engineering. And so I think it's very nice that we have parking right next to the building. You know, you can't beat that. But lately, there's been a bit of a problem because that parking is very popular. And so on days when the motorcycle parking is full, and when the weather's bad, I like to park in the Court Street ramp. And so I noticed recently that you guys installed a new parking system. And so the gates that close over the lane are now, they extend the whole width of the lane, because before, I used to be able to drive around the gates. And so particularly from this side, which I think is the Capitol Street side, there's basically only one way out now, which is to go in the entrance lane, which I think is very unsafe. And then if you go to the other side of the ramp, you can go out the way that you would ride in. But I think this is also pretty unsafe, because you basically have to ride across the sidewalk. And it's hard to see over all of the parked cars and everything when you're trying to make that turn. And so I tried to email the parking department about this, but I don't think they really understood. And so I just wanted to make you guys aware. And so I think this is important, because the cost of the parking permit is $90. But then, if I was to drive my car instead, I would end up paying 1,100% more if I stayed for four hours a day, or 2,700% more if I stayed for eight hours, which I don't think is very sound investment for a graduate student. And so to conclude, I did a bit of math, and so I found that if I ride my Super Cub for 365 days, around, one round trip a day, I would generate around 52 pounds of CO2. But if I were to drive my car.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address this topic, or to state anything that is not on our agenda? Seeing no one online or in person, could I get a motion to accept two correspondence? Well, actually, one, because that was a presentation. Well, we'll take that one as well. Two correspondents.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by.
Alter.
Alter, seconded by.
Your choice.
Dunn. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passed, a seven to zero. We're at item number 10, planning and zoning matters, 10A, as a rezoning, 2640 North Scott Boulevard. Ordinance, rezoning approximately 10.26 acres from low-density multifamily residential with planned development overlay to OPD RM 12, for the purpose of amending the approved planned development overlay, plan in sensitive areas development plan. This is second consideration, and staff is requesting expedited action.
I move that the rule requiring that ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings, prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived, and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Second, Thomas.
Moved by Taylor, seconded by Thomas. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one in person or online, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Motion passed, a seven to zero. Could I get a motion?
If I could, Mayor. Six to zero, because Councillor Burgess is recusing.
Oh, yes. Six to zero with one recruzo of Councillor Burgess. Can I get a motion to pass and adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dunn, seconded by Alter. Roll call, please.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Motion passed, a six to zero. We're on to item 10B, which is rezoning, J.J.R. Davis 2nd Edition and J.J.R. Davis 4th Edition subdivisions located between Mormon Track Boulevard and Dane Road Southeast. And this is a motion for passing and adopting. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved, Harmsen.
Second, Alter.
Anyone from the public like to address this topic? All right, seeing four individuals, no one online. We'll ask that you come, sign in, and state your name and city you're from. There are stickers in the back if you wanted to. Oh, you have your stickers. Well, welcome. State your name and city you're from. You also have up to three minutes.
Great. Thank you, Mary Teague, and members of the council. My name is Dennis Mitchell. I'm here, once again, on behalf of the George Dane Family Trust. Before I get started, once again, I do want to thank all of you for all the time that you've spent reviewing the materials, visiting the property, and spending time with the Dane family members to try to get a better feel for this. There are just a few things I'd like to reiterate as to why we believe that the council should deny the pending rezoning request. First, we believe the current commercial office zoning is much more consistent with the comprehensive plan, including the South Central District Plan and the future land use plan, than the proposed rezoning. These plans all emphasize the importance of buffers to mitigate uses of different intensities, as well as the importance of parks and public spaces. The current commercial office zoning provides an important buffer in transition from the future park, as well as the neighborhood. Second, as noted during prior meetings, there is already land zoned, CI1, to the south and west of the subject property. This makes it even more important to maintain the current commercial office zoning and the buffer it provides. If rezoned, the only access to the future park could be through areas that have very intensive commercial uses. Moreover, with land already zoned in this neighborhood, CI1, it seems premature at best to rezon these parcels before those parcels have developed. Finally, no plan was included by the applicants with the rezoning request, and they chose not to hold any Good Neighbor meetings. If rezoned, the future use is almost certainly going to be much more intensive than permitted by the current commercial office zone. If the subject area is rezoned, without a plan, it's going to be difficult to limit the impact of the future park area and the neighborhood. For this reason, we believe the application should be denied, or at a minimum deferred, until a plan has been submitted. Again, the Dane Family Trust is not opposed to the development of these parcels. We just firmly believe that the current commercial office zoning provides ample opportunity for development, is much more consistent with the comprehensive plan, and is in the best interests of the City of Iowa City. As Councillor Taylor has noted, there is no other park in Iowa City that has intensive commercial zoning as a neighbor. So again, we would urge you to vote against the rezoning request. I appreciate your time and consideration.
Thank you. Welcome. Please state your name and city you're from.
Thank you. My name is Albsora. I'm an attorney with the Left Law Firm of Iowa City, and I live in Johnson County, Corville, to be exact. I'm here today on behalf of the George R. Dane Family Trust. There have been multiple meetings with lengthy public comment, and many pages of materials already submitted. Based on all of this, there are sufficient and legitimate grounds for you to deny the rezoning request. To summarize, and just to summarize, I swear, first, the proposed rezoning is incompatible with the existing neighborhood character. The adjacent land will become a future park. Of this, there's no doubt. Intensive commercial use will impair the park with increased light and noise pollution, among other negative impacts. Multiple council members have already spoken about the need for buffers or conditions being placed on the subject property. This is so because the rezoning's negative impacts on the park and incompatibility with the neighborhood are readily apparent to everyone. Second, the proposed rezoning is not consistent with the comp plan, the district plan, and the Parks Master Plan. All of these documents emphasize the importance of buffer zones and open green spaces between parks and, oh, sorry, between different types of intensive use. The proposed rezoning has no buffer zones, and so is not consistent with these plans. Simply put, you have enough grounds here today to deny the rezoning. Additionally, this matter reminds me of the Hickory Hill Estates Project. You know, there, the community came together to protect Hickory Hill Park a couple of years ago. You rejected the initial rezoning application because of a lack of adequate buffer zones between the park and the proposed development area. And that led to the And that led to the developer designing a better plan that had better buffer zones. Here, you're faced with a similar situation. The community has come together and voiced its desire to protect the future park. You've received numerous written communications to that effect and as well as verbal comments. Here, there's a lack of adequate buffer zones, as the CI1 land is immediately and directly adjacent to the future park. As you did then, you should now deny the rezoning request. This will not stop economic development. Instead, the developer will have a chance to rethink buffer zones and compatibility with the park. The end result, just like with Hickory Hill Estates, will be better, more responsible development. Lastly, and Mr. Mitchell mentioned this, there's no proposed project with this rezoning application. That puts you in a position of incredible lack of information. At the very least, you should defer action.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Bob Dane from Iowa City. A couple of things in light of what they have said and what was brought up to us at the last meeting. It was suggested that the family should become proactive and maybe establish our own buffer zone in the park property. Two things with that. You wouldn't be ready to, soon enough to provide the buffer that you suggested we build. And second of all, the estate plan will not allow us to build a buffer on the park property in any direction, on any side that would block the view that currently exists. Some people involved with this are proactive. The family, we have been proactive all the way through Mormon Trek's redevelopment and all the zoning requests that have come forward to the council. The initial Mormon Trek was going to come along the ridgeline. We had the city engineers come out and said, hey, you're going to have to have a 40-foot cut to match the old grade to Dane Road. They moved it south to its current location, which is a perfect place for it. It's an old right-of-way that was owned by the county. And we have spoke to the council about all the CI1s in the neighborhood around that. In regard to the buffer zone and blocking the views, I spent the last two to three years working on the south fence line to clear the volunteer trees that blocked our view to the fairgrounds to the southeast. Billions has also been proactive. They now own all the property from Grace Road, from Grace Drive, all the way around to the White House on Mormon Trek. At the end of the first reading that was approved, they began activity south on the fence line from the farm along Mormon Trek, taking out trees and fences. After the second reading, they moved to the parcel in question right now and removed fences and trees on the west side of Dane Road. But nothing has been planned. Nothing has been planned. So I guess my final question is, does the city really want to have a park? Have control of the 17 acres to become a park? If not, let the executor know now, and they can begin making other plans to make it available to somebody else. But it was my father's intention for it to be a gift to the city for the use of the 17 acres. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Please state your name and city you're from.
Good evening. I am Jane Driscoll, the eldest granddaughter of George and Marjorie Dane. And I ran across this, and you might recognize it. It's the cover of your comprehensive plan update. And I'll point out a couple of things. These types of diagrams, emphasis is placed on the text that's the biggest, which has got the most votes or the most mentions. And generally, the constituents are participating in that. And I'll just highlight that there are some significant words on here. Walkable, community, people, parks, neighborhoods, bike. And teeny tiny down here is shopping and some other, like, scale and some other words that are small enough that I can't read them, that suggest that maybe those aren't quite as important as what the big letters are that you could probably see from where you're About 10 days ago, as my uncle mentioned, we heard a noise outside and went out and saw some workers tearing down trees, tearing up fences along the south, or the edge of Mormon Trek on the right-of-way that was put in by the city when the street was put in. And then they moved over to the neighbor property along Dane Road and proceeded to take out not only the trees that were inland from there, but the trees and the fences, the fence along, parallel to Dane Road. Why would a owner spend money doing that if they didn't have some sort of plan in mind? The suggestion that the applicant has made that there is no plan, I can hardly even speak to it because it's so frustrating, that there's no plan, that uncertainty is there, seems to me a valid reason why you could deny this or defer it. All along in this process, we've heard the supposed park, the speculation above park, the maybe park. Well, now that I think everyone is agreed that this is a legal fact, that it's going to be a park, all along it was dismissed, oh, that's not important because we have a property owner that wants to do something, but there's no plan. And now that you know that the park is legal, it is going to happen, it's a fact, that should create some merit and credibility in your minds.
Thank you.
And we have nothing on the other side.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? CNNO1 in person or online? Council discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to start out on this one. I have struggled with this proposal from the very beginning. I have, to this point, voted twice to approve the rezoning, albeit I have had some reservations with that. I think council and the rest of the public should remember that we made a direction of city staff to include the park in our comp plan update as well as district plan update that is forthcoming. I think, though, both in light of my own personal diving into this topic, hearing from the community and the family about development that is going on, or, you know, preparing of land for development that is going on on the southern side of the property, I think that that does call into question an important value of ours, which is working with our community stakeholders, whether that be our developers, our landholders. We want to work with them in good faith, and we want to expect the same thing from them. So I am a bit concerned at this point. I have seen pictures of the tearing down of the trees, of the beginning to work with the land. And I'm, again, still concerned that the same property owner that, I believe this is the case, the same property owner that is working on that land, not subject to this zoning, owns property within the zoning, rezoning area. So, you know, again, I'm concerned that something bigger may be going on here. And this body has, in the past, made it clear that we have an interest in adding conditions to the zoning proposal. That is our prerogative, and it is our problem that we have gotten into a procedural situation where that is not currently possible. I don't think that we should ignore the public interest at play here with regard to a future public park, with regard to our ability to listen to the folks that own the adjacent property, to impose those conditions, something that I will remind the body that they have asked for since the very beginning of this conversation of us. And again, we have gotten ourselves, and I think, again, we're working in good faith with each other. I don't think that was purposeful or deliberate. I think that it was a genuine mistake. I was surprised by the fact that we weren't able to do anything at that point. So I want to share a little bit of my personal philosophy with what I'm going to propose here, and I think that credit is due to Counselor Thomas on this because this is something that has developed out of our personal conversations, and I really do believe in it. I think that in all of our zoning decisions, we have the ability to create winners and losers. At the same time, we have the ability to try to make the best possible situation for everyone in our community in all those zoning decisions. And that's kind of what I try to go towards when I'm thinking about my decision-making process. So I think it's our prerogative to, at least me personally, make sure that we don't have winners and losers here. Make sure that everyone can, if we're going to pass this, which it may seem as though we may, that we can do some of the conditions that were requested, or at least have that conversation. We've not even had the conversation about what conditions were requested by the adjacent property owners. I want to have that conversation. And I want to actually be able to do something about it and understand the ramifications of those decisions. So at this point, I do believe that we made an oversight procedurally in moving forward without conditions. And I would like to ask if the property representative is present to answer some questions? Is the property representative present?
John Marner with MMS Consultants, representing the developer as best as possible to try to address your questions.
So there is a developer?
Hmm?
So there is a developer?
The owner.
The owner.
Applicant.
Okay, the applicant, okay.
Correct.
So are you aware of what's going on with the adjacent properties to the south?
With respect to the fence clearing or the fences and the tree clearing?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'd feel like I need to intervene on a couple of scores. One, I don't think it's legally appropriate to talk about what's going on on property that is not subject to this rezoning unless it bears direct result or impact on this property. And so I don't think we should ask this gentleman about that. Furthermore, there's been discussion both from members of the public and from council about the absence of a plan and so forth. I just want to be clear that that is fine. They can apply for rezoning without a plan. We cannot require them to come forth with a project and so forth, and it would be an inappropriate reason to deny the rezoning just because a project plan has not been put forth. That's all.
So I think then we're good with you, but thank you very much for answering.
Thank you.
I guess my concern then comes less from, of course, we can't require them to present a plan, but the fact that we have been told in the past that no such plan exists and that we can observe the development is going on in the area. And I know that that is not in and of itself a reason to deny, and I would not vote to do so. But it does raise some questions that I have. So my proposal to the body is to allow us to kind of figure out the situation with regard to conditions, to understand, to better understand what the conditions requested by the adjacent property owners would be, to give those considerations proper consideration, and to look into expanding, or look into opening the legal process that would be required to impose those conditions. And to that end, I would request a deferment of this until that can be completed. I don't see, again, this as a reason to deny the rezoning. And at this point, I'm not saying that I would vote to deny the rezoning. But I do think that we have an obligation, at least me personally, I feel as though we have an obligation to try to make the best situation for everyone. That means for the adjacent property owners, that means being able to address the situation holistically. And I think that we have inadvertently procedurally tied our hands in that way. So my advocacy is going to be for a deferral.
I want to ask, the council did have this discussion on, we lost the ability to do some, you know, some conditions. And then we asked for our staff, Danielle, to come forth and tell us, like, in light of the procedural, you know, pickle that we found ourselves in, you know, how does some of our desired needs that, you know, the community has mentioned, you know, can play out? And to my knowledge, the staff took clear heed on what this council direction was, as well as the just, the code itself, the things that they would have to do is already there. And so I hear the request for the deferment, but I do feel like we've already fleshed out that. And at that moment, I believe this, the majority of this council felt comfortable with that. And so for me, you know, I do hear the need, and I agree that it's something that we want to make sure moving forward, that there's not institutional memory loss. But there's also things within the code that will just meet some of those standards. So for me, I'm going to be supporting this rezoning, while keeping in mind that the things of the community that you just mentioned, that they want and want, it may not be all the way there, right? But the elements of making sure to the best of the ability to be a good neighbor is there, and so I'll be supporting this.
May I ask a couple of questions? And one, I think, is for Eric, and the other maybe for Danielle. So my understanding is that if this goes forward and it's rezoned, or if it doesn't and it's commercial, whatever, at the time, no, let's go with if it is, to the proposed thing, that at the time that a developer may come forward, that that's the time that we, there are conditions that come in for particular kinds of use, right? Like the intensive automotive. That would be when we can talk about conditions and/or that there are conditions already built into the code for certain types of use. So you see, I'm like, ones to you and ones to Danielle.
Yeah, no, I do. And I think it's mostly as to the latter. That is, we're talking about a major site plan review. And as I mentioned previously, it would be hard to imagine a development here that would not qualify as a major site plan as opposed to a minor site plan development. And therein, in city code already, there is any number of requirements that are built in there. And we've already received, we staff have already received guidance from you that, you know, if there's any kind of discretion, at least for developments that are on Dane, bordering on Dane Road, my memory, that was one of the conditions that you folks were interested in, that, you know, we be exceedingly careful and respectful of the future use of the Dane Family Trust property as a park.
Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, just refresh my memory because it seemed to me that, like, with that, like, intensive automotive, that there were already things built into.
So Eric, do you want to talk about what's appropriate with a rezoning for conditions as far as the timing of conditions? There are no conditions on a site plan. It's an administrative review done by staff to code with very specific criteria in the code. But knowing the direction we got on the last meeting regarding this topic, that's also a part of this now. I don't know if your question about when to place a condition is still a question?
No.
Well, the other part of it, I'm sorry, and I forgot, I should have mentioned this earlier, was that if any, the neighborhood and development director, services director under code is empowered to send any major site plan to planning and zoning, again, not council, planning and zoning, for their review. And again, for any development that's going to be bordering on Dane, the understanding from staff was that either Tracy Haichu or her successor, whoever is in that position at that time, would send it to planning and zoning to make sure there was good public input and transparency about that.
And I think, Mayor Houghton, maybe what you were referring to was, within the code, sorry, Danielle, I apologize, we may need you still, that there are use-based requirements, right? There are certain uses that then trigger, for example, different kinds of buffering in that.
Some of the things that are reviewed during site plan are triggered by either zoning district, or they're triggered by an element of the site. So parking areas, regardless of the zoning district, have screening standards, and the screening standards are a certain level of screening. And it may, it's more to do with what it's next to than the zoning district. So there are standards that are kind of a mixed bag of what triggers what, but they definitely are in the site plan review criteria very clearly to follow.
Thank you for the.
Yeah, I just recalling our last conversation. Yeah, it's not a condition that we are imposing, it's already in the code.
Thank you. That's exactly what I was. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Go ahead.
I was just going to kind of hearken back to, you know, the last couple of meetings that we've had. I do just harbor, I mean, first of all, I think we are, we have acknowledged that this will be a park, and I appreciate the care with which that has been. will be a park, and I appreciate the care with which that has been reiterated so that we, you know, that we're not equivocating on whether it will be a park, whether it is the Natural Heritage Foundation, or the city, or whoever, or the county, whoever is managing it, we understand that it will be a legal reality that it is a park. Where I harbor reservations in turning down the zoning in this particular case is that, you know, there is just a half of maybe the smallest border of this piece of land that abuts the property that we're actually talking about, that is the Dane Family Trust property. And so I just think it sets a really difficult precedent if we're saying we can't rely on the standards that are already in the code as far as screening and buffering, and we can't rely on the direction that we've given our staff, and we can't rely on other legal protections like nuisances that give adjacent property owners the ability to say, hey, what you're doing on your property is causing a problem for me. We have recourse for all of, you know, at sort of all of those stages. If we turn it down, even with all of those things in place, I just, I think that's setting a precedent that I'm not comfortable setting. So I very much appreciate the family's concerns, and I know it's the other part of the family that owns, you know, the property that we're talking about to be rezoned, as well as the immediately to the north. So it's a complicated situation, and we've spoken to that this is not, you know, a super straightforward decision, but I just wanted to reiterate some of the reasons why I'm not comfortable saying no to this rezoning with everything that we've discussed.
Well, I certainly appreciate Counselor Dunn's concerns, and, you know, I think I, myself, have expressed how, you know, particularly with the CI-1 zoning category, which is kind of one step below industrial zoning, and the code references the, in effect, that fact that there are, there's a need for special consideration with respect to the impacts generated by a project that's CI-1 zoning. And given that as a starting point, it certainly seems to me, you know, as a counselor, I have, it's difficult to be able to effectively respond to what those special needs may be with respect to the buffering of potential impacts. I'm not, I'm not opposed to the C1, CI-1 zoning. You know, I'm sure, it's a grab bag of land uses that are allowed under CI-1. That in some ways is why it's so difficult to predict what the outcome may be. Some may be very benign, and others may have a significant impact, we just don't know. And so I am drawn to the idea of deferring. I'm not opposed to the rezoning of CI-1, but I do feel that a deferral may help us in being able to better understand how we can address this interface that the rezoning would generate and come up with the most effective remedies.
I just want to thank Counselor Burgess for enumerating the protections that are already there, as well as honestly, a trust in our staff to be able to, you know, work through the codes as they are written, and to understand as well that there are some recourses as far as nuisance laws, and so she did a much better job of enumerating those, but I have to agree that, at the same time, my heart is with the park. I do believe, and I know, and I'm incredibly happy that the park is a reality, it's, it is there, it's going to happen. But it is one portion of land that all surrounding it is already zoned, and as far as, you know, as Eric pointed out, you don't have to have a plan to have this rezoned. And so as complicated and as emotional, truly, for me, as this has been, I also am very hesitant, Laura talked about it in terms of certain precedents that are already in place that we would be bucking, but I also think that, from a really macro view, there are so many components that we would have to play twister to be able to, say, as a council, we need to not attend to those pieces that are already in place to appropriately make sure this land is, to use this land appropriately while respecting adjacent land. I don't think that, as a council, as a body, that we should become this granular in dictating exactly what should be happening with a particular piece of land. That's, so I will still be supporting this motion.
Well, the two previous votes, I've made my position quite clear, it's obvious how I feel about this, and as was mentioned, the one major thing that I keep stressing is that we have so many parks, and parks are important in our community, and not a one of them is bordered by intensive commercial. And I just think that that's a bad precedent to set, and it's just not a good thing, and I'm saddened to hear that we can't require a plan, because I do have a problem with understanding that. It seems so open-ended and unpredictable to me, and, I mean, I liken it to going into a voting booth. You certainly wouldn't go into a voting booth and check the box that says unknown. You wouldn't do that. You wouldn't go to a restaurant and order something from menu that says unknown or uncertain. So why on earth, with something important like this, would we go into this and vote on something that's unknown? We don't know what it's going to be, or how compatible or not compatible it's going to be with this surrounding beautiful green space that's being given to us. So I'm, again, going to be voting against it. As far as Counselor Dunn's motion to defer, if it would help us to move along with this and find an effective answer to this that's compatible with all parties involved, I would go along with that.
I get, go right ahead.
I just want to interject before Counselor Harmsen has an opportunity to speak. I'm sorry, that came off wrong, I don't want to...
You're good.
Thanks. What I wanted to say was this, I can imagine a council conversation about the kind of steps that council can take in order to buffer, shield properties such as the trust property that, you know, will be future parks and so forth. I could see the value in that. However, I'm struggling to see the value of a deferral here in that even if council has this discussion and comes with a laundry list of conditions, I'm not sure to what vehicle you would adhere them. That is, as we discussed earlier, the conditional zoning agreement, you know, is gone with the closure of the public hearing. I'm not sure how we would impose conditions, other than the conditions already required by ordinance in the major site plan review, but if you were to come up with a bunch of different things, all of which would have merit, I'm not sure what we would do with that information. And so I want to make sure that if council wishes to defer, that you would recognize that you might spend some time coming up with what would otherwise be a highly merited list, but I'm not sure what you would do with it. So I don't want to allow council to retain hope that you can impose that, a list of conditions, at any point in the future.
May I say?
Sure.
Yeah, I think, you know, even if we chose not to go with a conditional zoning agreement as a vector for getting these conditions, a deferral would give us time to better understand the protections that exist as they are in a more detailed capacity, as well as, you know, understand what the potential desires of the adjacent landowners are. And, you know, we could potentially address those things by changing the building code, as I understand, changing the building code or changing the zoning code.
Well, the building code doesn't really relate to the kind of topics that we're discussing. Zoning code could, but unless you impose a moratorium, which we have not done, and I don't think would be appropriate certainly at this stage of the proceedings, having already voted yes two times, I don't really know that either of those changes would be on the menu.
And why not?
Well, do you want me to follow up on the building code? Do you understand that part?
Well, so I'm, really, what I'm trying to say is, you know, the protections that everyone is talking about are already existing, and, sorry for my ignorance for where those come from or what those are, but again, acknowledging that I am ignorant to what those things are, what would prevent us from, during a deferral, you know, amending that to ensure that we are satisfied with protections?
Well, I think the answer is because I don't think you can impose a moratorium at this stage of the proceedings, is the short answer, and I think that's what would be required for you to kind of move the goalpost, so to speak, in the middle of the game, or two-thirds of the way through the game. So I don't think that's an option available to council. Again, let me be clear, I can imagine the value of that conversation on a broader scale, and I know that there's been discussion by council about, you know, having staff go ahead and move forward with the district plan amendment as part of the broader comp plan review, and to view the George Dane Trust property as public, and that's all already in the works. It's just the, you know, kind of things that we're talking about tonight, I think, that are legally problematic.
I don't know how much this is weighing into my colleagues' decision-making, but I was just curious about the idea of the adjacency of different zoning to parks. So just from pulling up the zoning map while we've been speaking this evening, there is CI-1 adjacent to Napoleon Park, there is industrial adjacent to Musquaky Park, and Sturgis Ferry Park, and immediately across the road from Ryerson's Woods and the Johnson County Fairgrounds. So that's just a, just from looking at one place that is closest to this proposal, I think having high-intensity uses adjacent to parks is not something that we don't have.
Yeah, thank you, I was going to comment on that, because I think it's important to point that out. We do have very high-intensity uses next to, actually, some of our most beloved parks. If you think about Terry True Blood Recreation Area, to the north of that sits our Public Works campus, that would be, if it not zoned public, would be an industrial type of zoning. Across the street from that same park, you have S&amp;G Materials, which would definitely be an industrial type of use. You even have industrial next to Mercer Park across the railroad tracks, you have an industrial that will be adjacent to the future Eastside Sports Complex that's been planned. And then you also have what would be industrial next to Waterworks Prairie Park and Kicker Soccer Park in our wastewater plant and our water treatment facility. And you have a lot of other, you know, heavy, what I would consider intense uses right next to parks, right? I-80 goes by a number of our parks, including some of our kind of natural areas, Waterworks Prairie Park, Hunter's Run Park is along 280. So parks can exist next to intensive uses and still be very much enjoyed and heavily used by the community.
I don't have a whole lot more to add. I think that Counselors Burgess and Alter sort of gave us a nice recap of what we've already discussed in previous meetings, and, you know, what I said in previous meetings, I have nothing, nothing really to add to that.
Okay, so I've not really, I mean, I've heard talk about a possible proposal for deferment, but I haven't heard a motion for deferment.
I will move.
So move by Dunn.
Claire, do you, deferring to a date certain, do you have a date?
Let's say, you know, two meetings prior, next, the next, not next meeting, but the meeting next, whatever that would be.
So let us...
I'll second that.
Move by Dunn, second by Thomas.
Okay, to June 20th for the record.
On, I think we'll just do roll call, please, and this is for the deferment...
Sure.
Until June 20th.
All right. No need for council discussion on that motion?
Council discussion?
Well, one thing I would, I would say is, you know, just in listening, I think it is interesting to hear that there are, in fact, parks in Iowa City which are adjacent to CI-1. One potential use of the deferment would, in my mind, be looking at those sites and trying to get an understanding of how that adjacency has been addressed to ensure the impacts of that zoning have been mitigated, so that the park experience is left whole. You know, I'm a strong supporter of looking at existing, at precedence of examples of where you have the interface similar to what we're talking about now, which could help inform the process that we're looking at being in place should we support the rezoning.
I just wanted to give a procedural. Just clarified, so this is going to be a vote for the deferment until June 20th. If that passes, then it'd be deferred until June 20th. If it fails, then the original motion to pass and adopt, we would vote on that. So I just wanted to let people know what that procedure will look like. Any other comments?
So I guess one of my questions is in the ears, you know, to press a pause, to be able to learn more about what kinds of conditions, not ones that we would impose, but ones that already accompany certain uses, right? Is that what, I mean, that's...
I mean, that's what John just said.
Okay. Well, certainly, I understood when you were talking about the adjacency of how these existing parks mitigated that, or how they became good neighbors to one another.
What was the relationship between these, the park use and the CI-1 use, whatever that may be?
Right, and then I thought I understood, and so, correct me if I'm wrong, that you were interested in getting more clarity about what the certain types of uses of buildings, what the accompanying conditions already in the code are.
Yes.
Such as, like, you know, I mean, I'm remembering from a couple years before I was actually on council, but the area where Paul's is, or was, and now it's Harbor Freight, that there wasn't enough light shelter, right, that it was coming over. So it's things like that. So you want to pause to be able to find out more about what those types of things are?
Yeah, pause, pause to find out more about those things, being able to present those to our adjacent property owners, whether or not we're going to vote it up or down. I don't think, and I would make it very clear that in my deferral is not an indication of a lack of support. I just think that it's, we should do a duty, when we have procedurally tied ourselves for me being able to look into this, or pardon me, being able to, you know, add conditions that I would personally support, I think it behooves us to, you know, not take that opportunity. And again, it's not, it's not a yes or no to the actual proposal, it just gives us some time to go into this just a little bit deeper.
Yeah, I just, I recall Danielle, actually, I think it was at our, one of these meetings, talking, maybe that was the first one, thank you, about what the conditions, the built-ins were for code when it was heavy, presumably a car lot, essentially, since we were looking at neighboring businesses, and so, yeah.
And I'd just like to add, that's something we do as staff on a daily basis. People call and they ask questions about what might happen on this property next to us. We walk through the code and we can explain those code provisions. It doesn't necessarily have to be done at this table if it's not going to, and it really can't influence your vote. We're happy to do that with any property owner in town.
Are we ready for a vote? Roll call, please.
Motion to defer, correct?
Motion to defer. Right. Teague?
No.
Thomas?
Yes.
Alter?
No.
Burgess?
No.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmsen?
No.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion fails four to three. We're on to motion to pass and adopt. Any more further comments? Roll call, please.
Thomas?
No.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn?
No.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Taylor?
No.
Teague?
Yes, motion passes four to three. And I want to thank everybody for coming out for this item. We're going to move on to 11A, which is...
No.
Teague?
Yes. Motion passes four to three. And I want to thank everybody for coming out for this item. We're going to move on to 11A, which is a transit funding application. This is a resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the Iowa Department of Transportation for fiscal year 2024 state transit assistance and federal transit administration funding. I'm going to open the public hearing, and I'm going to invite Darian back up, well, from earlier.
Good evening, Mayor. Counsel.
Welcome again.
I first wanted to let you know that, and make you aware that there are updated funding numbers in a late handout, so please draw your attention towards that. The resolution before you tonight is for our consolidated transit funding application. It is an annual application filed with the Iowa Department of Transportation, listing all the capital and operating expenses for which the city seeks funding from the Iowa DOT and the Federal Transit Administration. The projects contained in the application have been programmed into the Iowa City Transit for FTA Section 5307, 5310, and 5339 funding for FY24. The projects will be included in the FY24 Iowa DOT Consolidated Transit Funding Application and the MPO JC, the Metropolitan Planning Organization of Johnson County's Transportation Improvement Program. Iowa City Transit may not seek funding for all of these projects, however, these projects need to be in, listed in this document in order to become eligible for federal funding. The total amount of the projects, the funding being requested is approximately $30 million. Specifically, the specific allocations are for state transit assistance program. We're requesting $692,000 for federal operating assistance for transit, that's our 5307 funding. It's $2.95 million for federal funds for transit in non-urbanized areas or for transit serving primarily elderly persons or persons with disabilities. This goes to help support our Johnson County seats, paratransit services. The funding request is $177,000. And last but not least, the statewide federal capital assistance for transit, which would be 5339 funding, which would come through grant awards, would be approximately $30 million. These funds include all of the capital projects that Iowa City Transit wishes to see funded. So this includes replacement and relocation of the transit facility, that's a big-ticket item, electric bus replacements and bus shelters. And typically, a local match is required for any of those federal funding awards.
Darian, I do have to ask on the late handout, I just want to make sure I'm understanding, in the first paragraph, there's a summary, and it says the last sentence, the total amount of funds being requested in the funding application is approximately, and then there's the number replacement, and that should be the sum of all of these? Or just the, because it looks like that's just the statewide federal capital assistance. Should that be like 34 million instead of 30?
So you're correct. So the total funding, that should probably read, to be accurate, the funding request for the competitive grant funding applications is really what that should read. You're correct. So in total, the total would be the $30 million, which is the competitive grant funding request or the eligibility for federal grant funding. And then you're correct, the 690, that would be in addition to the $692,000 for state transit assistance, the $2.9 million for our federal operating, and then the 177 for 5310.
Thank you. And I will say, as my fourth, entering the fourth year and serving on NPO also, it's all finally making sense.
I look forward to that, too.
All right. Thank you. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Please come forth. CNO-1 online or in person. I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
Just so we're clear, we're talking about approving the revised resolution that it was in the late handout, just so we're clear for the public.
Yes.
So moved. Harmsen.
Second. Burgess.
Council discussion. Roll call, please.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 11B, utility rate, public hearing, ordinance amending Title III, entitle city finances, taxation and fees, Chapter Four entitle schedule of fees, rates, charges, bonds, fines, and penalties of the city code to increase or change charges and fees. Could I get a motion to pass and adopt?
So moved. Dunn?
Second. Alter?
Anyone from the public like to address this topic? CNO-1 online or in person. Council discussion. Roll call, please.
Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item 12 is announcements of vacancies new. 12A is the ad hoc truth and reconciliation commission to vacancies to fill unexpired terms upon appointment through December 31, 2024. Counsel correspondence included, counsel packet, triauri resigned during the item 9C of the May 2, 2023 city council meeting. Human rights commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment through December 31, 2025, correspondence included in counsel packet. Can I get a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved. Taylor?
Second. Alter?
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, motion passes seven to zero. Announcements of vacancies previous, Airport 13A, airport commission, one vacancy to fill a four-year term, community police review board, one vacancy to fill a four-year term, historic preservation commission at large, two vacancies to fill a three-year term, historic preservation commission Longfellow, one vacancy to fill a three-year term, historic preservation commission Northside, one vacancy to fill a three-year term, housing and community development commission, three vacancies to fill a three-year term, library board of trustees, two vacancies to fill a six-year term, planning and zoning commission, two vacancies to fill five-year terms, planning and zoning commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment, public art advisory committee, two vacancies, one at large and one art or design professional to fill three-year terms. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, May 30, 2023. Historic preservation commission East College Street, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term, historic preservation commission Jefferson Street, one vacancy to fill a three-year term, historic preservation commission Woodlawn Avenue, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Vacancies will remain open until filled. We're at item number 14, city council information.
I just have a small piece that two weekends ago, there was a Great 5K in the Riverfront Crossings of Girls on the Run, which is wonderful national nonprofit that has a really strong local Iowa contingent, and it's for girls from grades three through eight, where they undergo, I think roughly eight weeks of training, six weeks to eight weeks of training, to run and/or walk a 5K. But along with it, it's about confidence building, collaboration, self-esteem, and it is pretty freaking spectacular to have seen all of those girls and their run buddies and families. The energy was fantastic, and it's a fantastic place to hold the 5K. So I just give a big shout out to that organization here in eastern Iowa. They had a great representation through the Iowa City School District. And just congratulations to all the girls and their families and friends who attended and ran.
Congrats to all of our University of Iowa graduates who graduated just over the last weekend. So if they're watching, well done.
I'm sure they are.
All of them.
Every one.
You can give our regards.
Graduation requirement.
All right. We'll move on to item number 15, report on items from city staff, city manager's office.
Nothing tonight.
Our city attorney?
Nothing for me. Thank you.
And acting in the role as our city clerk.
Nothing for me.
All right. Well, thanks for all you've done for this meeting.
Yes.
Yes. Item number 16, adjournment. Could I get a motion, please?
It's all moved. Second.
Move by Taylor, seconded by Burgess. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, motion passes. We are adjourned.